Put it away. I'm gonna call to order the Thursday, October 12th, 2017, meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Northampton. To begin, we always have to offer an opportunity for public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. If you have public comment you'd like to make about an item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do that. Seeing no hands and no one raising up, we'll move on to the agenda. Before we call the first item, just like to help everyone understand how this kind of works, I don't know how many of you are frequenters of this meeting. We, this is a conversation and a discussion between the Planning Board and the presenter and the public. It should not be a conversation or discussion between the public and the presenter, or the public and people in the audience, or people sitting next to each other. It's really a conversation that goes this way to help us understand how this works. We'll have a presentation by the applicant, we'll then have some public comment and some conversation from questions from the board, we'll offer public, people who have the opportunity to have the public comment, we'll then close the public hearing, and then we'll have conversation amongst the board ourselves, which we won't then, you can stay as long as you like, but that then ends the public part of the, of the meeting. And that's just kinda how the process works. Anytime we have this many people in the room, it's obvious that it's a very highly interested topic, there might be emotions that run high, we'd like to remind everyone that, just like you, we're just citizens of Northampton volunteering to serve on the board and trying to do the best job that we can. So, we hope that everyone can offer each other the respect and, and understanding of whatever position they might take, there might be questions, might be issues that we can't address, and if that's so, we'll, we'll let you know, and that perhaps there's a different venue for you to address your concern. So, just wanna kinda lay that out there and let everyone know kinda how the meeting works and how we go about this, and I think Mark would like to say something before we call the meeting to order.
Yep, just for full disclosure, just because of the work I do, I have and am currently working with both the building and landscape architects that are presenting tonight, I don't feel it prevents me from being objective, but if anybody feels differently in the audience, if you raise your hand, I can just recuse myself from this hearing.
Sorry? Anyone object to Mark's participation? Seeing, hearing none? Okay. So, I will call major site plan with shared driveway special permit, open space residential cluster and special permit, commercial outdoor recreation, dog park, Sarah Schatz.
Schatz.
Schatz. Sorry about that. Zero Glendale Road, Florence map ID 94-4. Is there, is there a presentation? By the applicant?
Yeah, I'll give a little intro.
And I was just reminded by the technical people that if you're giving a presentation and you're gonna be using these, if you wander from the podium, then no one will be able to hear you and it won't be recorded, so you need to stay pretty close to the podium.
I'll just give a statement, you know, front introduce myself and then, then dip my, um, table to the left.
Wait, ma'am, ma'am, from the podium, please. Remember, this, this is a conversation between us.
Okay, cool.
Ma'am, ma'am, facing this way.
Sarah.
You're talking to us.
I haven't done this before.
Sarah, just right in front of there.
Thank you.
You don't have to move the microphone at all.
Howdy, ma'am. Okay. Thank you to everyone for coming tonight. My name is Sarah Schatz, and I'm the owner of Sarah's Pet Services, which is a dog walking business, and I'm the founder of Wagon Trails Dog Park. I've lived in Western Massachusetts since 2000. I live in Hatfield with my husband and three young children and three dogs. I started a dog walking business while I attended UMass for animal science and have been in business since for 17 years. I currently have eight employees and we walk between 50 and 80 dogs a day in Amherst, Northampton, East Hampton. We all know dogs are important part of our families, and there are currently 2,000 dogs in Northampton alone. Our experience owning Sarah's Pet Services, which is a primarily off-leash dog walking business, made it clear that there is a high demand for off-leash walks for canine companions. I surveyed, when I surveyed over 700 dog owners in Northampton, 70 responded that they do currently walk their dog off-leash. Unfortunately, the closest dog park is in Holyoke and Long Meadow, both of which are about an acre or less, which is not as appealing for many who would like to get a real walk-in. This leaves few options for dog owners in the Northampton area. In my survey, 35% said that they walk at the community garden and 37 on the trails of conservation areas in Northampton. This made it clear that although the Pioneer Valley is filled with naturally beautiful woods, people are confused by leash laws and privacy issues. Dog owners want to train their pets to be safe off-leash, but they're afraid their dogs may run away or meet unfriendly dogs or unfriendly people. It's been my dream to build an amazing space for dogs and their owners to enjoy nature together in a safe fenced property large enough for a hike. I've spent the last two years working to make that dream a reality. I believe not only will we make a park that will respond to needs and wants of dog owners in Western Mass, but also address issues such as dog waste, parking, and lack of clear rules that are present at the most common places dog owners currently walk off-leash in Northampton. The land I found on Glendale seems to be a great fit for our plants and the best use of a parcel that contains many disturbed areas from a previous sand pit operation. I'm proud to say that Wagon Trails will be the largest dog park in New England and one of the nicest in the country. I have an amazing team helping me with the design and I'm excited to share details with you today. I had hoped to have a site visit and invite all the neighbors, but that was not allowed since I don't yet own the property. I really enjoyed meeting neighbors while I went door-to-door with Council of La Barge, and have already used their feedback to make changes to our plant, and I will continue to respond to their feedback. I look forward to being a good neighbor and hope residents will take advantage of my offer to have the first few years, if their dog meets requirements, for free at our dog park. And Berkshire Design is gonna give most of them.
Thank you, Sarah. Make this as large as we can. Okay. I'm talking to you guys. We're pretty excited about...
And you are.
Oh, yes. I am Rachel Luffler with Berkshire Design Group. Peter Wells with Berkshire Design is here today, and Dan...
Bottom.
Bottom is here also, and he's the architect on the project. And we just came from a Conservation Commission hearing where we received approval with conditions. Additionally, earlier today, our stormwater permit was granted also with conditions. So, as I mentioned, permitting in general is a very, very detailed process. This is a flow chart we made in the office in the last month, just to make sure we're dotting our Ts and crossing our Is. So, concurrent to our special, our site plan permit and our special permit for cluster development, we're also seeking a special permit for outdoor recreation, and then we were pursuing the noticement in town. So, the site today is in, off of Glendale Road. It's a 49-acre site. It appears to have been excavated as far back as 1970, in early 70s for gravel. The back portion of the site has since grown in with scrub trees and underbrush, and areas where the, where the mining operations excavated down to groundwater have become wetlands. We had a wetland scientist go out last year and delineate the wetlands, and then we also surveyed that, and that influenced our design on site. The site itself is a mix of meadow and forest, trails and gravel roads, and out front is a very large, open, sandy gravel area. Off of Glendale Road, there is an existing road, and then, and then you open that, I'll show you the pictures. So, here are some photos of what that looks like. This is an image of that road into the site off of Glendale Road and how it opens out to the gravel area. There's an image of some of the trails. A trail through the meadow, some stoneout crops in the meadow areas, and the open pit itself. So, anytime we start to look at a design, we're coming at it from two different vantage points. One, we're designing experiences for people who might use the space someday, and then we're thinking about what sort of structures and physical things need to be built so those experiences can happen. We've heard from Sarah that she wants a really dog-friendly space, a place that dogs can run off-leash and owners don't have to worry about them escaping. A place to showcase the New England landscape with diversity of habitat. Sarah also has talked about providing educational training for owners on-site and a place for dogs to gather them together. Additionally, we're trying to promote sustainability as much as we can, and we're working with Sarah and, and working with the regulations to push that as far as we can. So, what that means for our dog park is that we have trails. We have 18 acres of trails. They include woods and streams. We are, we are providing, we're proposing a pond, sand dunes, a, a dog office, a washing station, parking and connection to the bike trail. So, on-site, how that breaks out, we can break out the site into four zones. The first zone, close to Glendale Road, we are looking at breaking off a part of the land to, to promote cluster development. So, that's a two-acre site. And the middle, or front middle of the site is open today, we're gonna redevelop that and restore that for the large park area and then the small dog area and the, and the pond area. Area three, moving back in the site, is the majority of the, of the trails that are fenced in. We have 15 acres of trails fenced in. And the area in the back and forth, we're gonna parcel out and dedicate to conservation and restrict animal use to that area. So, this is how those functions are playing out across the site. Also, we should have mentioned that we are preserving a wildlife corridor through the site, so between areas three and two are open and not fenced. If you are taking your dog from area two to three, you have to go through a gate to get there. So, this is the existing site with all its buffers, lots of wetlands, it's kind of a Swiss cheese site. And this is a plan showing how we are, how our development footprint falls on the site. So, as you can see from this image, the majority of our work is happening on the front part of the site, and we're mostly putting in fences and reworking trails in, in the back part of the site. So, this is the front area and the back area. I'll take you some, through some of these areas in more detail. This is a zoom in of that two-acre cluster development off of Glendale Road. There are three separate lots that share a driveway. The, they comply with the setbacks associated with the cluster development, 15 feet side, 20 feet front. We are able to accommodate a less than 8% driveway through the site to get access to the back. Also, off of Glendale Road, we're gonna reuse the existing curb cut drive access, and we're gonna pave it and narrow it down a little bit to provide access to the park. We've also drafted up a, a plan with meets and bounds for that, for that dividing out of the cluster development, and we have a copy of that today also for you guys. Moving into this interior of the site, this is where all the exciting, fun things happen, dog-related. We have 28 dedicated parking spaces, asphalt paving, and that's really at the middle level of the site. The site goes up to the north and down to the south. Across the site, there are about 50 feet of grade change from here to here. In the upper portion of the site, we are fencing in a little over an acre area for small dogs, and we have meadow planting and shade trees, a doggy dune area with a dedicated walking path around it. To the bottom of the site, below the, below the parking area, we have, there's an image over here of, of Dan's rendering of what the building might look like, the office building, which will, which will hold a dog wash station, an office, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Down slope of that, we had, in the natural low part of the site, we are hoping to build a pond that will be lined with clay and vegetated on the sides, and adjacent to that, we have a stormwater collection area that can handle the processing of the stormwater on-site. These are some images of what, what we envision the dogs doing on-site. We have a doggy dune area up here for dogs to dig and play in. The pond is sized for competitive dog jumping, this is, this is an event that is popular in some parts of the country. So, our pond is sized for the dock and, and the pond for that. And then we're, we're working with landform and shaping earth to make, make good play experiences and places for people within this previously open bit of land. And this is, this is more of the, the technical drawing that accompanies that illustration showing the grading, the tree species, extent of pavement, and the locations of those features. I should mention that we've had a little bit of design evolution in the last month with Sarah and Architect, so some changes that have happened from the initial plans that you saw, we've pulled stairs away from the edge of the building and added some more lighting, which I'll talk about in a moment. And this is a zoom in of that upper area, how the grading works out with a large doggy dune mound, and then gentle slopes along the side. We are also allowing for a mass DOT standard built to slope and width for a bike path, a shared-use path going north to south across the site, which is shown here, that falls outside of our fenced area. And we are planting a lot of shade trees and meadow mix and rain garden plants. Dan, do you wanna talk about the building at all?
Sure. Do we have elevations or just this?
You have this, and then you've got that.
Okay. So, the, the building's a pretty modest, almost like a barn-like structure, and as you, this would be the view as you approach from the drive up towards the parking would be on the right, the building is here on the left. Off to the left below would be the... Close it, or anyone know? Close. To the left would be the, the water feature. So, it's a pretty simple 900 square foot on the main floor with an office, a welcome center, bathrooms, and then it has kind of an L-shaped wraparound porch. It's situated very well in north-south axis, so on the south side, we could have PVs on the roof. The materials are pretty simple. Be rough hewn siding, metal roof, and not a whole lot of windows, but the ones that are there are somewhat large. So, here's a series of elevations and a cross-section of the building. Is there a plan? But essentially, I guess this is probably the best way to see where you approach, you get a view. Here would be kind of a view spot out over across the water. And then, a pretty large porch, covered porch area that you could get out of the rain if need be, or dogs could hang out in the shade.
Utilities on-site, we are using municipal water, making a connection on Glendale Road and bringing water into the site to, to the office building. We also are making connections to the, proposing connections to the three building, cluster development buildings. All sewage on-site has to be treated on-site. We do not have a sewage connection on Glendale Road, and we have sized and accommoded plan for septic systems. Our civil engineer was out early in August this year and conducted test pits with the, with the Board of Health. They found 14 feet of sandy soil before hitting groundwater. Kind of ideal for septic. So, we do have a septic system up slope of the office building. We're gonna use an ejector pump to pump affluent up to that field, and we, we have grade for gravity flow out of the buildings in the cluster development. Stormwater on-site, there's a stormwater report that accompanies this, and we just, we did receive approval with our stormwater permit. We are collecting surface water flowing off the parking lot, sheet flowing into a rain garden to the north. Any overflow of that will then be piped subsurface to a rock boulder outcrop, and then allowed to infiltrate in this infiltration swell adjacent to the pond. The pond itself, we will have a, we will have a shallow, a shallow well to provide non-podable water to it, to keep it at level. Moving back into the site, across, across the intermittent stream, we enter in the 15-acre fenced-in trails system area. This lighter green around its perimeter, it is, will have a fence, there'll be a double gate for dog owners for access, and Sarah is looking into a key fob system so she can monitor all dogs and owners on-site, where they are and how often they use the site. We're gonna reuse the existing gravel road entry into this interior of the site, and we were gonna, we're gonna add a couple extra trails around the periphery so that we can have walking loops and figure eights for owners to walk through. We're also going to bring in a little bit of topsoil and reseed some of the meadow areas and clean them up a little bit, so that there's a variety of vegetation. These are some images of what the existing conditions are and the existing features that we're trying to bring into the, into the design. In that larger area, we're looking at using agricultural deer fencing on-site, and these are some images of what it looks like. And then that, in the back area, to offset our open space requirement for the, for the cluster development, our cluster development is 2.02 acres. Our back area, we're gonna exceed the requirements for offsite open space. We are less than a quarter of a mile from the cluster development. We're looking at a little bit over nine acres of land to dedicate to conservation. Here's an image of what, what that area looks like. And we have, we are, we are meeting the requirements for 50% of the area being outside of wetlands and outside of steep slopes. Those areas are shown with a thicker line within this, this, this image. So, as I said, we're placing 9.35 acres into conservation restriction, and of that area, 1.48 acres are, are flatter than 8% and not wetlands. Also, there's 4.9 acres of wetlands in that area that would be preserved and kept. With a dog park, we have to deal with dog waste, and Sarah has, and there have been numerous conversations about this, and it's something that we all take to heart, how to manage dog waste. At, at the base level, the minimum of the current plan is to have dog collection stations throughout the site that will be maintained and waste will be collected at the end of the day by her staff. We are planning on using biodegradable bags and collecting them in a dumpster on-site. Pie in the sky if things worked out. There are two other avenues for waste collection that we might be able to pursue, and we would, of course, come back to, to talk about that. One is Street Clean out of the UK has a municipal dog waste collection system in many of the cities, where they're collecting dog waste on the city level and processing it for, to generate electricity and fertilizer. Another system out of Cali, Colorado is a company that comes and collects dog waste, picks it, would pick it up from Sarah's dumpster and then turn it into fertilizer to sell. So, those are, those are things that we're very excited about, and we would like to go in that direction, but for now, we're planning for a dumpster on-site. Lighting on-site, we've, we submitted plans and we received comments about the amount of light fixtures that were originally shown, and we also heard comments from some of the neighbors that they were concerned about the amount of lighting. And so, we went back to our lighting designer, and he was able to generate for us a, a much smaller footprint for lighting. So, now we are proposing only one light pole fixture at Glendale Road, and then we're proposing light pole fixtures in the parking lot, and then downlights at the building. These would, these would turn off a half an hour after the office closed. On the park, I should also mention, is open dawn to dusk. We are trying, we are meeting, we're well below the .8 foot candle threshold that's required for this zone, and we've had a lot of conversations with the lighting designer about, about meeting that threshold. This is zoom in of what all those foot candles are, I don't know if you guys can see them. I have plans of those also for you guys today. These are cuts of the two fixtures, the slant fixture for the building, which we've, we've been in contact with the manufacturer to, this image shows that there are lights coming from above and below, and we've convinced the manufacturer to produce the, produce the light cut without an uplight, so we will have no uplight on the building with the building fixture. We've had a lot of back and forth with the lighting designer about, about bug and glare, that was one of the comments that we received. He was able to work with the manufacturer to change the metrics to get the bug rating down to one for the glare, but if that is an issue, a condition, we can go back and continue to work with him to meet the requirements that you, that you desire. I should, he did tell us that a, this fixture, if we went to a fixture with a zero glare and zero uplight and bug, it would be twice as much as this fixture proposed. And I, I have a copy, a full copy digitally of the permit set as it stands today, if you guys have any, any questions.
Question on the lighting, the, the bug rating that was at one but not zero, but you've reduced the number of lights overall from what was submitted, from what to what as far as quantity? You had one at Glendale Road?
Yeah, so we have one at Glendale Road and three at the parking lot today. And before, we had four at the parking lot and nine on the drive. So, we've significantly reduced the number of lighting.
This, the glare rating for one applies to each of those four fixtures? Okay.
And the way he explained it to me with the, with the glare concern, that to have a glare of zero, you have a very narrow downlight, a very narrow cone, and to have uniform light across an area that you're trying to illuminate, you start to have to place the fixtures very close together, and so he was trying, was hoping to balance that out.
I hate, I hate to use this term, but there's a dog leg down at the bottom-left-hand side of that piece of property, and you haven't discussed it at all.
That area, so, when we were doing exploration of the site, the, we had a, we had another design before, via, for what you see here today. We had a much robust trail system that extended back into the site. After our wetland scientist went out and flagged the wetlands and we saw how substantial a footprint this is, we, we decided to, to pull back this work. We are leaving, and you'll see from the, the conservation restriction map, we are leaving a bit of the neck open to Sarah for however she wants to use it in the future. If she would like to expand out this way in the future, she would have to, again, go through all, all the steps of having, having the resources delineated, if they're there, and, and coming before the appropriate entities, but for now, it is... But for now, it is, um, it is land that-
Just the way it is, it's gonna stay the way it is. And how many acres is that?
Um, it's about, about ten. Ten or so acres, yeah.
Are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, then we would have questions for the board and then we will open-
Up the public, and I'll just ask, you haven't mentioned traffic.
Oh, yes.
Which is always one of the topics we deal with, so if you could try to address that on the front end.
Um, our traffic study was prepared by Mark Darnold, um, a civil and traffic engineer in our office. Um, in the report, he talks about using the, um, the Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines for determining both the average daily trips and the peak hour trips. Dog parks currently are not categorized within the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, so we looked at a park as, as the basis for the numbers. So our numbers are based off of what they provide for park visitation. Um, with that study, um, every road has a theoretical capacity according, according to this designation. A two-lane road such as Glendale Road has a theoretical capacity based upon its width and dimension. We also received uh trip numbers from the city of North Hampton for Glendale Road. They were a little less than two thousand trips per day, which is pretty low for the size of road it is um in terms of transportation engineering speak. You could see and for this type of road, you could see that amount of um trips being per hour um would be the holding capacity of this type of road. For this project, we, when we went through the numbers and went through the calculations, our peak out, our peak um trips were six associated with the park based upon the square footage, number of parking spaces and this type. Um, six is not changing the level of service on the road at all. Um, and even, I mean, the park, the road capacity has, has enough to support it according to that. A level of service is, would still remain an A level of service in terms of the transportation engineering standards.
So, just to help clarify, so if this becomes the most successful dog park in America, the capacity of the road in front of it that it's off of, that already exists, even if it's at the highest level, the percentage basis would not change the nature of that rating of the road that, that's already there. Is that, am I understanding that?
I, I would think so, yes. Yeah. I mean, we could run the numbers on. And, yeah.
Let me expand upon the traffic issues as well. So, there are a couple things. One, in that the zoning requires that the applicant analyze um, the impact to the level of service, which was explained, and the peak hour trips. Um, so generally, when engineers do a traffic study, they look at the drops in level of service and um, peak hour trip generation. Our zoning also requires, even though generally, um, the standard language coming out of the traffic engineer is that this is insignificant. Our zoning specifically says every incremental im- um, change in um, or new trip generated has to be addressed. And the zoning requires that it be addressed based on the district um in that and based on the number of peak hour trips. So, um, as you've seen in projects that you look at, um, um, that come before the board, every residential project, commercial project, unless it's in certain specified districts, have to address those incremental increases in trips that are generated. And the applicant can do that by either making improvements to the network, uh, physical improvements. It could be anywhere from sidewalk construction or um intersection safety improvements for pedestrians. Or alternatively, without making um those physical improvements, a payment into a traffic mitigation fund could be um offered. In this case, um, even though the engineering analysis says, you know, this is insignificant, but to address the zoning, the applicant is providing a public easement for um a potential um bike path or trail connection to allow access other than, you know, across the city that will connect actually to the ridge development ultimately if the trail system is built. The applicant is not building that, but offering the land has significantly more great, a greater value than making what the zoning would require in terms of a payment in lieu of that impact. So that's how the applicant is proposing to offset their um traffic.
So they're providing that easement, which is outside the fenced in area, but they're not actually constructing that?
That's right. The, so that we value the land or the easement that's being dedicated for that purpose. And we've done that on other projects as well, so it's not unique to this situation. And, and so what the, the iss- the, um, so what that does is sort of banks an access and ability to connect the network across sort of the southern part of the city. And we started that on, you know, west of here at the Ridge subdivision, which is west northwest property. And goes through the property that the city just um acquired through limited development at what was formerly known as the Kensington Estates. So, um, it's one of those issues where we collect the pieces of the puzzle but can't necessarily implement it right away.
Sometimes when we've collected the pieces of the puzzle, we've, we've, we've had the applicant construct like sidewalks to nowhere that aren't connected on either end. What, what makes this different, that they're just providing access to, for the city to construct a pathway in the future but not actually constructing it?
Um, well, they're, they are actually constructing sidewalk on the frontage of the property, so that, there's no sidewalk now. So that's their piece. Yeah.
Other questions from the board before we open it?
Um, Rachel, can you describe again the numbers relative to the open space? I saw a chart up there, but I, I don't think the board has seen the actual number, um, so, um, and the amount of open space that has to be put in a conservation restriction um of some sort. Um, and how that match, because the entire project is essentially the cluster development. Um, so the developed portion of that area has to be offset by an amount of area that's currently protected from development.
I pulled that up with the chart and then also this was, I've got a couple copies of the, the larger version. So the, there are two point oh two acres out front that we're subdividing into three lots, cluster.
And then what is the portion of the dog park area that's developed, not the trail section, but where the parking and the building is located?
I didn't calculate that, but that would be the whatever, um, forty-nine point six minus the two point oh two minus the nine point three five.
Minus the ten acres in the back to-
Well, that is the nine point three five.
I'll have to look at the numbers. So, the, the issue is just wanting to make sure that in order to meet the cluster requirements, you have to set aside an equal amount of open space as being developed, of which a small portion can be wetland, twenty-five percent can be wetlands. So I think those numbers just have to be clarified.
And it has to be within a certain distance?
Well, the whole project, because it's a cluster, so right now it is within a certain distance. Um, and then there would be, um, and, and so that, that piece of it has been met.
I guess I'm a little confused. Are we saying that the nine point three six open space lot may not meet the requirements of the minutes?
Um, I, it could, if it's not inclusive, I, the, the developed area also has to include the dog part portions developed, so that number may not be. So, um, I just, but I haven't seen the numbers, so don't, yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll open it for public comment and if we can go about this in an orderly process, that would be helpful. Anyone that would like to speak? Yes, yes, sir. We'll kind of alternate, we'll go back and forth. Uh, you have to come to the podium, please, and identify yourself and where you're from.
Hi, uh, my name's Alan Dorman. I'm in a butter. Um, my address is two two nine Glendale Road.
Um, can I just, for clarification, can you give the technical definition of what an abutter is so that people understand that?
Sure. Well, there, there is a legal term for a butter under the state statutes that abutters are notified of public hearings um for um projects that come before any board. Um, so the way the state statute defines the abutter is the person immediately adjacent to the property, the shares of border, and those within three hundred feet of, um, of that is on the same side, without crossing the road. Um, those are the folks that are legally required to be notified. And then there's notice that's published in the newspaper and then the city does an extra notification by requiring applicants to post a yellow sign at the road. So anybody going by who may not be officially an abutter under the legal, in the legal sense, can see that there's something, you know, happening, a public notice sign.
All right, thank you. We just want to make sure everybody stood with that.
Thanks. Um, I have three questions and then a comment. Um, my question's clarification was about the three cluster housing in the front. Is that uh land, or, or is that, those building lots gonna be open to the open market? Or is that um for developers to, i- is that Sarah's responsibility to develop those and sell those properties on her own, or is it just being? And with some type of control, it's a type of building that's going to be built? Or is it um just open to the open market? That's one question. The, another question was about parking. Um, Sarah was kind enough to come around and, and meet several of the neighbors and we had a discussion about the number of parking spaces. I believe that in the presentation that was just given, there was mention of twenty-four, was it? Twenty-eight, okay. Which was down from the number that Sarah told me a week ago, which was thirty-six. My concern is the popularity of this place that may take off. And where would additional parking be if there were thirty-six members? Thirty-six at the, or twenty-eight at the property, where would additional cars park? Or are they refused, or what's the process there? And my third question was about this bike path connection because just behind my property, there would be a fence and just on the other side of, well, I think the bike paths, from my understanding, was a bike pass, path access for, for future development by the city theoretically, um, and then the fence and where that would be. And then my, my comment would be about the traffic. For those of us that live on Glendale Road, we know that traffic is, it's a major cut through commuter wise and, and to say that it's a, a um acceptable two-lane road that can handle more traffic, to me, is really questionable. And the condition of the road is not the best either, so um, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to address those questions? So the first one was about uh the cluster housing, how will that be addressed and?
I would be selling um that piece of land. I'm, I'm, my hope is to not individually sell the lots personally because I need to focus on this very large project that I'm managing. Um, but I'm, I'm in talks with, um, one-on-one talks now before I even own it, to try to find a builder that I know and, you know, I think would be a great builder. And then the parking also, she can talk about that.
So we've built in some flexibility for expansion in the site design. Um, we do have the twenty-eight dedicated paved parking spaces out front, but we have room for about, about twice as much um on other side grass parking. If we were to pave it, we have, we would, of course, come back and look at the stormwater and modify our documents um for approval. And the bike path question?
That's a question that Carolyn, that you want to address, or is it that?
About, um, is that it?
Just location?
It's a bike path.
Yeah.
Oh, the bike path, location? Yeah, could you put the, that?
So what?
No, go ahead. You might talk about the separation.
Yeah. So where the bike path meets the street is adjacent, adjacent to the road entryway. It's to the north side of the existing drive. It goes into this, into the site. And then you have an option to cross a crosswalk into the sidewalk in front of the dog park building or continue north. And I think probably a better graphic of that would be this overall plan. So this is the road that I just described. Um, and the bike path is to the north of that and then it shoots up to the north to the connection that Carolyn was talking about. Um, and as far as fencing, I should probably zoom in for that. This lighter green area is the area that is fenced in for the dogs. So the dogs in here are not able to run out into the bike path. But there is no fence along this side and it remains um open to this, open to the street. So this is again, that edge of fencing for the dog area and the path that comes out to the street.
And just to clarify, the bike path, you've, you're speaking of it as it, as if it's going to be built, but you're getting, you're providing an easement for it to be built in the future.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not gonna be, okay.
Correct.
And there's, there, there are no plans set out, there's no money, there's no design, so.
It's in the, it's eas- it's land in the bank to-
Right, right.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Uh, I think there was a person over on this side, so we'll go back and forth. Yes.
Hi, Marshall Fellows, one-two-three Glendale Road. Traffic, I just want to rea- reiterate that Glendale Road is, has been obnoxious the last ten years because it's heavily traff- traveled. I, I admire Sarah for what she's doing and she's approving a place that needs to be improved. The uh, uh, traffic studies that were done on Glendale was one time, I remember, for the landfill. And they chose to do it on a day that the landfill was closed. So these are the kind of things that have happened on the street where you tell us we have had a traffic study, but hence it was done when the landfill was not operating and there was no traffic to the landfill back and forth. If you come to our, our vicinity between six and eight and three and five, we have become a crossover because there was a detour a couple of years ago. And people said, wow, this is a great crossover now. Uh, we are thirty-five miles per hour, but I think going by my house, it hits fifty-five miles per hour. Now, the upcoming bike path, I was involved quite a bit with the Kensington, Kensington Estate. And now the land has become conservation. And I have told them to push the landfill fence back because people now are parking on the tree belt to get into the land that is conservation. And, and just in general, water pressure, I know you replaced the pipes, but I have four houses coming around mine that haven't been built yet. You have three houses more, that's seven, and then a, a working building for uh water. So I was just wondering about the water pressure, uh, the traffic and, and any improvement to Glendale Road would be appreciated. I have gone to DPW many times because I right now have a standing puddle in front of the house and I'm paying the community tax, the rain tax, as they say, to watch the water go over my fence. So Glendale Road needs more, more- So, Glendale Road needs more, more improvement, because you've put a lot more out there. We used to be a small country road, now we've got nonprofits there, Service Net, we have a handicap facility, we have another handicap coming in through Habitat, through Manny, these are all good things, I'm not against it, but you have not approved anything on the road to make it safe. Now, people actually have traveled up the path to park into this conservation area to walk and stuff, so I've got cars parking all over the place, and my suggestion, suggestion was gate two, push it back, that's city property, so people can come in. Now, with this bike path, Sarah, would she be responsible in the, in years to come, be responsible for people who are not coming from the center of town by bike, they will come by car, take the bike off the rack, and travel all the area you propose, and so where are they supposed to park? Parking is going to be a big concern on a small, you say Glendale Road can handle it, but sure, but when people start parking on the sides, it comes a one-way, one-way, I mean, you've just got so much out there now that, and you haven't done any improvements to the area, in drainage, in traffic, and doing anything to the road. Now, I'm not saying us neighbors want you to expand and put big sidewalks and expand the road, because you, I'll be watching the cars go by the house, not hearing them. So, that's something to keep in mind, you, people keep throwing things out at Glendale Road. We have a re-center, we have a transfer station, we have all these nonprofits and blah, 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 but you do nothing to improve the road. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just... And I'll just clarify that this isn't the particular venue that, for discussing the road and the paving and the improvements, that's not within our purview. It's this project, and, and I understand your concerns, and I appreciate that, but just, it's, this is not really the venue that we can actually do something about the condition of the road and the, and those types of improvements. So, I think there was someone over here, yes, ma'am?
Can I say something before that? I, I actually, after talking, you know, I'm in total agreement with the neighbors about that, that's not, hopefully against me or my project, and I'm happy to go and work with them at the DPW, to try to make improvements, because as a business, I, I don't want to pretend that it's not an issue, you know what I mean? So, I, I just want to state that I'm perfectly happy to...
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Chelsea Klein, I am not a dog owner, I am not an a butter, I'm a hiker, and I'm a mom of three, and very often, when I'm out in the woods with my kids, dogs that are off-leash, that should not be off-leash, approach us. So, I am here tonight with my two kids in tow, which is not easy on a weeknight, to express my very enthusiastic support for this project, because I would love for people to have a safe place to go, to let their dogs run, and be happy dogs, and not get in my kids' faces, or splash mud on my kids, or bite my kids, or all those things, so, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ernest Parity, I live at 255 Glendale Road, and I'm wondering with this project, is it absolutely necessary for the housing cluster to go in with the dog park?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Well, you're proposing to put in the dog park, and there's also going to be a cluster of three houses up top, does all that have to happen, so you're going to have the traffic from the dog park, and the traffic from the three houses?
I think, I mean, it's really more for the applicant, the, the housing is allowed, and by special permit, the outdoor recreation or dog park is allowed by special permit for the planning board, so it's, and there's enough land area to support that in accordance with the zoning, so it's really, that's the proposal that's been pitched to the board, I think it's, so I don't think the board can answer that question.
Yeah, whether it's necessary, that's not really something we can answer, I...
I just found out tonight about this, so I'm just like, sitting here with my, I could understand the dog park.
It's just...
But when you add all of this together, it's like, wow.
And, and I understand that, but it, you know, this is the project that's been presented to us, it's not, we, we can't make that determination of whether it's necessary or not. Yes, ma'am?
City Councilor, there, I'm the barge, and...
Thank you for waiting.
I have to say, out of all the development that I have handled in Ward Six, this one here had no communication at all, no. I have to say, thank God I've met Sarah, her and I, just recently, have been trying to reach out to non-butters and people on Glendale Road. Sarah called me a year ago, in regards to how she was looking at purchasing Willard's property, and she asked me about the neighborhood and so forth like that. So, she did say that she would let me know how things were going, I haven't heard anything but just last month. If things were differently, and we've done a lot of development in Ward Six, and we had private versus private, and I've worked with them also, where they would come forth and say, what can we do, Councilor? Okay, what can we do? Nothing, absolutely nothing. I did not have the opportunity, opportunity, to reach out to my residents on Glendale Road, Brison, and Park Hill Road Extension. These are non-abutters that are just as valuable also as abutters, okay? I treat them all equally, and I just find, and I know you have nothing to do with this, but I've talked with the mayor about it again today, I have great concerns of how this was handled. If it was also an owner who gave the city the rights to first refusal, we'd be having all these informational meetings, and I've been here before, where it made it much easier for people to understand exactly the process, and try to make things go right, and this was not right, I have to say that, for, for the first time as a councilor. And I feel bad for Sarah, too, because her and I, and I did not even know when these plans were coming here, and thank God that I was able to get a call from her realtor to meet with her. She called me a week before, about, you know, meeting with her, and again, hopefully, to see what was going to be happening here. I feel that there's a lot of questions to be answered in these plans, and I did state to the mayor today, I have great concerns of, I like the idea of, of the dog park, but I have concerns about the increasing of traffic. Going with Sarah, we've been going and trying to hit door-to-door to get this communication out there, and there is concerns. We've had nothing but traffic on Glendale Road. Yes, you have nothing to do with the roads, I've already talked, I'm going on-site with the Department of Public Works next week, we're looking at Marshall's property again, and two others, to see if we can put a bummer on the drainage problems. This bothers me, when I am hearing that all these towns and cities can use this private membership dog park, I can't tell you the traffic we have now. I don't know how this figure of fifty to fifty-five, Sarah, maybe you can explain this, and how many, and I told her about parking, keep the cars off of Glendale Road, we're not going to call for this, we have children on there, I have elderly on that street, it's a safety issue here, okay? And I, I want to know, is there going to be a limit on the membership? This is crucial here, because fifty to fifty-five cars a day, that's a lot of cars, seven days a week this is opened. I have elderly people on Glendale Road, on Brison, and Park Hill Road Extension, they don't even have, some of them don't have computers, had no knowledge of this happening. Thank God for one of my residents, Marlene Pearson, who has kept contact with them, helping them on the communication of what was going on here, and I do thank you for that, Marlene. It's not been easy for me as a councilor, and it has not been easy for my residents on Glendale Road, Park Hill Road, and Brison, I couldn't get to all of them. Sarah tried, she's running a business, I'm a councilor, heavy, heavy schedule, believe me, and it made it very difficult. So, I just want to let you know, safety is a big issue. I am going on-site with the department head on, on Wednesday of next week, ten o'clock in the morning, house number 250 on Glendale Road. Big concerns, a big safety issue. Yes, we do have a residential home, and these are disabled people there, and they're in a single-family home, and they have the rights to be there. Anybody has a rights by the zoning, and by the amount of people living in a home, that's the rights, they have a disability right also, beautiful home, they have a van, they don't drive. That dog park, if you come, it's on the left-hand side, the dog park is here, and the house is directly on the opposite side, it's a long driveway, we have two dangerous curves, I'm saying dangerous, I had to have signage put there, way back because of children. Now, I do have disabled people in a home, okay, where they are excited, wasn't one of them, very excited, about wanting to come over and walk around by the dog park and so forth. I don't think so, because that person will not make it, I can tell you right now, it's not going to make it. We are going to be looking at some serious injuries here, and I know there is a mitigation on traffic, and I think that the planning board really needs to hear me on this, on the mitigation fees. Something needs to be done at that site, on those two curves, some form of lighting, crosswalking, to protect these people attempting to go across the street. Also, I have many people who will be walking, coming down to that dog park, it's going to be very, very dangerous, fifty to fifty-five cars, I want to know if there is going to be a cap on the membership. I am being told Boston could come, even Connecticut could come, where is the fine limit on a residential area? This is not right. So, I am hoping that you really look at these plans, which I think are great, but we have some serious, serious traffic issues there, and safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yes.
What was the trips per day currently on Glendale?
Uh, two thousand?
Well, that was, so the, the counts that we have are from 2007, before the landfill closed, it was taken over a week period, so, you know, a full week of counts to come up with that. So, that was when the landfill was fully operational, we don't have a count since the landfill closed, that, that I'm aware of, is, that I've seen.
And what sort, what sort of conditions or, or, what can this board do in regards to traffic on Glendale Road, as it was, I mean, what are the parameters that we can put in that would require a city to do anything?
The board couldn't condition the city and other department to do anything, so the way the city addresses different road conditions and traffic is by, I mean, there's, you can imagine, there's a backlog of streets that need to be addressed, and they're, you know, based on the 2007 numbers, that volume is right in there with many, 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 many other streets in the city, and then we have many higher-volume streets, Burt's Pit Road, Florence Road, et cetera, three, four, or five times the volume. So, it's really, I mean, you know, DPW has an assessment process for looking at what improvements need to be made, and if there are little safety approv, I mean, we also have the Parking and Transportation Committee that looks at where can funds be allocated for certain, you know, basically, hot-button press, you know, issues, so that's a separate process, but the board can't dictate how to manage that.
But we could talk about the proposed traffic mitigation by the applicant and say, I mean, I guess we could have a conversation, is, is the easement the best form of traffic mitigation that the applicant could do for this project? But, I mean...
Could, but with the zoning, you also can't dictate, like, the applicant gets to pick what form of mitigation, and prove that they're meeting the requirement in the zoning.
Got it, okay.
And, we're talking about fifty-five trips spread over an entire day, so, you know, that's twelve hours dawn to dusk.
Yeah, interesting, broadly, like, that, in theory, we could have that conversation.
Thanks. Other public comments, yes?
Hi, I'm Marlene Pearson, I live at 196 Glendale Road, I have a couple things to say, because I, I don't want to keep saying what other people are saying, so for efficiency, I'm going to try to just stick to the facts.
I'm sorry, can I, did you say 196?
Yep, 196. First of all, I want to say this is an unprecedented business that's going into the city of Northampton that has never been here before, so I think we need to really thoughtfully consider the whole entire plan. I also feel very strongly that you, as a board, should delay your decision-making, because according to the permit application, it was made very clear in the permit application, let me find the page here that says it, the anticipated purchaser of the property has engaged with the neighbors as well, as will be holding some public open houses prior to the hearings scheduled with the city. So, in the previous meeting that we were just in, she said that she wasn't allowed to hear, have any public open houses, because she wasn't allowed to be on that property to have a public open house, and I just want to say, not really a good excuse, she could have gone to Florence Civic Center, she could have gone to Ryan Road School, she could have had a public open house anywhere, it doesn't say in here that it has to be actually on that property. So, I want to say, if we're going by the actual permit application, and things that she has put in here saying that she is going to do, she absolutely did not notify the public, she didn't have a public informational session for all of us to be able to talk about this ahead of time. So, that's number one, that, that she actually didn't do in her own application, and because that wasn't done, and because we're talking about her permit tonight, I feel like you shouldn't even be discussing approval of anything, because she didn't do that, number one, that should have taken place, number one, and that's kind of goes with what Maryann was saying about, we didn't even know this was going on, so we have not had a fair question and answer collaboration, there hasn't been any of that going back and forth, so we're actually wasting all of your time here tonight, because if we had had done all of this, we would actually have a nice succinct meeting where we can get down to the issues. So, that's the first thing I want to say about that, so please take that under advisement that you, that I don't feel that you should be approving or disapproving anything tonight, because we really haven't had any information ahead of time that she promised she would do. Another thing I want to say is, in her application... Another thing I want to say is, in her application, it says that there is a big need for a business like this in our town, okay? Something that hasn't been brought out is the survey that she put out, that I don't believe any of us on the street ever got or were submitted or knew that was out there, I don't believe she solicited information from the actual neighbors on that survey to really get a good feel for maybe some more of the things that should concern her. And five minutes, literally, you can GPS it, I'm not kidding, five minutes from the actual site that she's proposing to put this business on, in Westampton, located on 250 Southampton Road in Westampton, is a 50-acre privately-owned dog park that people can actually bring their dogs to, and they can walk them off-leash. Now, I will be forthcoming, because I like to be transparent, they only have a one-acre enclosed fenced-in area, because once the dogs learn to walk off-leash, the owner of that property allows your dog to walk in the 50 acres of open trails that aren't enclosed with fencing, and you can do it as a paid member. So, again, I feel like this is such an unprecedented business, I don't know why we're having a huge conversation about this, when I don't feel that there's a big need in Northampton for it, when five minutes outside of Northampton, this is already existing, and people can use it. So, another thing that we need to talk about is, as far as the traffic study is concerned, I want to say that everything that you are talking about when it comes to statistics tonight, about 55 this, or 30 cars that, or whatever, is absolutely nonapplicable. The traffic study that was done, and it says in the actual traffic study, they did not use correlating statistics. So, you are all talking about these 55 cars, but it's based on a regional park. It is not based on an unprecedented, unleashed, private dog park, because there are no statistics that exist for that right now. So, again, we need to think about using data that is actually applicable to our situation, and that data is not applicable to our situation. Also, the traffic study that was done on Glendale Road is 10 years old. A new traffic study would need to be done. I think that should absolutely be something that you can require of the actual business owner to take on as an expense, because the city shouldn't have to pay for that, because us taxpayers aren't trying to put a business there to walk dogs. Sarah is. So, Sarah should pay for the traffic study. So, we have actual data on the baseline of Glendale Road traffic right now, and then I think it should be put in there, that then we also need to reevaluate what we think for traffic is gonna be coming in. And I think we can do that only if we have a meeting where we can all talk about this together ahead of time, before this is voted on. That's just something I think that, you know, can be put in as part of the application process, or requirements, or whatever you want to call it. The, I think there's one more thing that I wanted to say on here. Trying to remember what it was. You know, I think that probably pretty much covers it, because I know other people are gonna have more things to say about it, but I think it's important to understand that people may not know that the city of Northampton is actually, you know, talking with Sarah about the conservation land, and we don't know yet if Sarah is gonna be selling actual conservation land in Northampton, and they're actually gonna be buying the conservation land. So, it seems to me right now that it's gonna cost a million dollars for her to supposedly build this whole thing. And then on top of it, we don't know what the city of Northampton is gonna be giving to her for money to buy the conservation land. And current figures right now are 350 members at $365 a year, which comes out to, I don't know, I wrote it down here somewhere, I believe, 127.5 or something like that? So, right here, $127,000 and $750, that's what she has right now, that she is disclosing as an actual budget. Is that gonna be enough budget to actually sustain all the maintenance issues that are gonna be involved with maintaining this property, so it doesn't actually degrade all over again, because it's already degraded? She's supposed to be making improvements, which is great, wonderful idea. But what happens when her operating budget of $127,000 is used up with runoff fees, utility fees, you know, the staff fees that are involved? And then if it doesn't maintain, if that budget doesn't actually pay for everything to maintain the property, us Glendale Road residents are stuck with a defunct business that didn't necessarily have to go in, because one already exists five minutes away. So, I think we need to look at the grand scheme of what's happening on our road, because our road is not designed for an unprecedented, unlimited, huge business coming in, that again, like Mary Ann said, has no cap. So, I think we also need to think about, there needs to be parameters in this actual permitting business, so we can cap it. Because right now, she can have as many customers as she wants. Daily passes coming in, on and off, yearly passes coming in, and let's talk about the events, shall we? The dog pond that's going in, we were just told in the last meeting, is gonna be, it could have competitions, they have dog competitions, these jumping competitions where they go into the water. So, how many events are gonna be here, too? We're not running Look Park on Glendale Road, we already have Look Park. I don't understand why we're doing a huge business that's gonna have a huge impact, and then none of us had any say about it. So, I think we need to look at the grand scheme of things when all of this is considered, because just approving a permit, it's not that simple. It's absolutely not that simple, when we have a bigger plan in place. And I guess that's all I have to say, and I hope you guys consider all of that information. Thank you.
Before we give a second, can I, is there anyone else that would like to speak before someone would like to speak again? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Pion. My family and I live at 340 Glendale Road. We share the same concerns that have been brought up. And in addition to that, we are concerned about the effectiveness on, possible effect on the property values of our homes, because I'm not sure that I would want to move into where I live if there was a dog park there. And the noise, there's a small boarding business that is just right down the street from us, and with just a few dogs, that, there are times when the noise from those few dogs is pretty upsetting. So, those are the two things that I would like you to consider. Thank you.
I think there was someone in the back, yes.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Spalding, I live at 942 Park Hill Road Extension with my father Roger Benoit. I, again, don't want to repeat a lot of things other people said, I have the same concerns as like Marlene Pearson and Marshall. One of the, a couple of the questions I wanted to ask or propose, put out there is, what is, what is gonna happen with all the existing wildlife that live back there in these proposed fenced-in areas? Are they gonna be moved to a new location, or are they just gonna be evicted and they have to find new homes? The other question or concern I have is the proposed future bike path. Apparently, it starts at Glendale Road, but where is it gonna end? It just, so is ending at the end of the property line, where would it be proposed to be going to? I mean, I can't assume it's just gonna be an eighth of a mile long and just end in the woods. The other question I, or concern I had is the traffic. I grew up on this street, I had to go to school. I had to catch the bus and walk up from Park Hill Road Extension to the top of the hill on Glendale Road. I took my life in my hands every day, just trying to get across the road to wait for the bus. We take our lives in our hands every day when we go to leave this street, because cars come flying down that road at greater speeds than 35 miles an hour. And I've been driven off the road a few times trying to get out of my street. So, what's gonna happen with that? There's gonna be more traffic, more chances for bad accidents, more chances for people to possibly get killed. How about the folks that live across the street in the handicapped housing? I work with folks like this every day, I drive them to and from their homes like this to program in East Hampton. These people, they're in wheelchairs, or they're on crutches, or they use walkers. How are they gonna safely cross the street and not get run over by someone coming up the hill, which is blind, on a blind corner? And their residence is right there at the top. They'll get killed. I mean, I like the idea of this proposed dog park, it's kind of cool, place for people to bring their dogs and walk off-leash, not bother anybody else. But I had no idea about this cluster housing being built, or this proposed bike path. I actually found out about this whole proposed business on Facebook. There was a public discussion about it on a public page, and some people were good, happy about it, and some people were not. And I just kind of read about it, and it didn't say where it was gonna be other than Glendale Road. I grew up on Glendale Road, I know the properties there, and I knew there was only one of two possible places, and one of them was very small. And I know the Willard property was going up for sale, because I know the Willard family. So, by deduction, I deduce that that is where this was going, and it's very close to where I live. So, I guess in closing, that's all about, all I had to say, was those are my concerns that were not addressed by other residents and neighbors in the, in the area. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other first-round speakers? Yes, ma'am, or I think, yes.
My name is Judy Rangel, I live at 119 Prospect Street, and I'm in support of the dog park, because I love to walk my dogs, and I love to walk them outside, and I don't like to walk them when people have their other dogs off-leash and my dogs are on leash. That said, it sounds like there are issues with Glendale Road I cannot speak to, I don't know, I don't frequent it. But I did want to speak to one thing that one of the women mentioned, which is, I can't in any way compare a open dog park to a closed dog park. And so, when you look at that and say, well, there's one right down the street, as a dog owner, having my dogs in a confined space is hugely different than having them in a 50-acre open space. So, that is one thing that I'm looking forward to, if this ever comes to be, to being able to put my dogs into a park and say, I'm not gonna have to worry about them taking off. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Also, to going to some of the houses, some of the people had mentioned if there was any way, any way that you did not close the hearing. In other words, whatever you decide, if it could go on, on your next agenda, that's up to you, that's up to private and private here, but that has been brought up. I do, and I do want to clarify, that I did ask Sarah if she would get permission from the Willards family and their attorney, if we could have a site visit. And a week after, she gave me the bad news, that they would not do it, they told her because of the legality part of it, and since she did not own it, she said, why should I have to spend the money? And I agree with that. So, there's been no communication, it's been terrible on this. Barking was another big problem. Okay, with all these dogs, starting early in the morning, possibly, Sarah, what time is it, 6:30, 7:00 until dawn? How is that controlled? I still, I don't disagree about a dog park, I'm a dog lover, but I'm having a problem without really a great amount of information. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Wellsbury, I live at 625 West Hampton Road. I just wanted to say that I did come to support the dog park. All these documents that they've been showing have been available for about a month, and I've spent the last few nights, you know, reading the 160-page stormwater permit, and I'm actually very impressed with what they've put together. And I agree, Glendale Road is narrow and does have traffic issues, but again, I don't know if that should be held against her in this planning process. That's definitely something the DPW and Mary Ann are apparently looking into, which I think is a good idea, but I feel like a lot of issues are getting rolled into this as a focus point. And I didn't honestly plan to speak tonight, but I know there are a lot of emotions about it, but, you know, me reading through all this, the merits of what they've done so far in compliance with the BVW and the Hanum Brook that runs through it, you know, this, this isn't, this hasn't not been thought through from an outsider. I don't know Sarah, I'm excited to have the dog park, we've actually been thinking about moving, but this is, this is a major plus now for staying in Northampton, having access to something like this, because we do have dogs. And I agree with what someone else said, like, we always are on leash wherever we are, and coming over a hill to an uncontrolled dog puts our dog in a very defensive position, and that can end poorly. So, having a place that we can let them off-leash, and they can be on equal footing with everyone else, and that dogs will be screened to some extent for membership, is a major plus for us looking into joining this park when it, when it is fulfilled. And I think that's basically all I wanted to say at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close? Yes, sir.
My name's Donovan Tiffany, I live at 122 Glendale Road. I guess one of my main concerns with the dog park, I like it and all, you know, most of what everyone said about the roads are true and such, but what exactly happens in the wintertime when there's like three feet of snow out there? Where does the snow go? Are the trails gonna be plowed or maintained in any type of way, so that if I was a member, I was able to still use these roads? Because if I paid for a year of membership, I would want to have some way of knowing that I guess I still had usable space out there. I know currently on the conservation land, there's ways to make that space still usable and walkable, because snowbills are allowed, but in these fenced-in areas, what type of machine or what you would be doing to make that space still usable for me if I chose to use it? I guess that would be my only question, thank you.
Well, yeah, I'd like to address.
Can I answer it?
Yeah, sure.
So, in my current business, we walk every day, no matter the weather, we walk in trails that have snow on it. So, I'm not gonna be plowing trails, but it will get padded down, the road will be plowed, the parking will be plowed. So, as of now, I'm just planning to, you know, I'm gonna have to get into business my first year and get through my first winter, I think, to see, gee, this isn't working, and kind of adjust plans, but that's my plan as of now.
And if I could ask a question of staff? Just maybe to address, clearly, there's an issue or concern about the accessibility and awareness of this project coming before us. I'm assuming, always a dangerous thing to do, that because it's before us, it's met all the requirements, it's done what it's supposed to do, and therefore, it's in front of us. Do we have any ability to impact whether there's more public, you know, is that even within our ability to say, you know, we've had a lot of interest in more discussion before any decisions made? Are we, is that within our purview to do that, given that, as I understand it, they've met whatever they were, you know, their requirements, and that are, you know, statutorily required to me?
Yeah. So, just backing up a little bit and to reiterate that, the, we in our process encourage applicants to reach out to the extent that they can to property owners, once they have a very firm plan, there's no step for requirement. Obviously, it makes, it's better if it can be a perfectly smooth process. Sometimes people can reach a few people, but not other people. But it's not mandated, and people... But it's not mandated, and people sometimes write in their applications that they attempted X, Y, or Z, and maybe it didn't happen, but that doesn't, that's not a fault of the application, per se. They need to meet the requirements in the zoning. There's a public hearing process. The board only continues hearings if there's more information based on information that's lacking in the hearing process, 'cause it goes both ways. You know, you wanna make sure that, that applicants coming forward are pres, have a clear set of rules that they abide by, but also the public needs to understand what those rules are too, and it can't be a changing, you know, target on either side. So, you, you really only would continue a hearing if you feel like there are things that aren't addressed. But to, and, and this public hearing process is, that is very much for information dissemination. So, people come to the public hearing, obviously, to understand a project more fully. And when we send notice out, we make sure that the information's on the website, and the people can call us with questions, and that certainly didn't happen in this case. We didn't get any calls on this. So, I certainly wouldn't recommend you continuing it, just so other groups can, can discuss it, because it's outside the public hearing. You can only consider things that are in the public hearing process. So any separate discussions that happen outside that are not legally within your purview to address. So, that could set up perceptions on the part of public that, you know, if they have these meetings outside the public hearing process, then that addresses issues, from your perspective, but that's not how it works. So, the other thing I wanted to mention too, about traffic, I know this came up, is that the traffic mitigation requirement is based on, you know, there are two ways you can look at it. One is if it's a brand-new project, on a new site that's never had a use, the applicant addresses all that traffic, the new traffic. This was a previously disturbed and used site, heavily-used site, with a much different type of traffic, but yet still trips were generated from this site. So it's not just, let's say, using a park standard, which is, would be considered typical. I think you, there's not a use in the ITE for every single permutation of a use. So, it's very often categorized into like things to determine traffic. But so, you're gonna look at the difference between a gravel operation and the proposed use. So it's that change, not just all those new trips. 'Cause there is sort of this baseline of trips, based on the fact that there was a gravel operation there.
Can I say there's also gonna be a, Marion said a meeting because of my hard time.
I don't know what we're supposed to talk about.
Well, I'll just mention it, 'cause it's, but there will be, I want to continue to talk to neighbors, whatever happens, you know, and, and talk to people. So we've set up a meeting, and Wayne is gonna come to that also, to help continue to talk to more of my practice, not really your part, but my piece, which some of, some of the questions are about my piece, the plowing of the trails, or how I'm gonna run it, or my limitations on parking, or what will I do? You know, I can't really respond to people right now, but at that meeting, which was in me and Chambers?
October twenty.
October twenty.
That's gonna be in the hearing room.
In the hearing room. So, for everyone who's a neighbor, to continue to talk to me.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I think, not so much a question, but just to reiterate, in, in some sense, part of the discussion, I think, that we've heard tonight is, is akin to, like soccer at the Oxbow, and, and in the end, had nothing to do with the merits of soccer at the Oxbow. It was about traffic, traffic up and down Island Road. And Island Road couldn't support it, and it was dangerous, and can't cross the street. And, you know, with people, moms bringing their kids dressed in their soccer uniforms, don't, you know, don't take Timmy's soccer game away, and it had nothing to do with that. It was traffic. And that's, and that's what this is about, traffic on Glendale Road. As far as it, whether or not it's a good business model, or whether what their budget is a year, that's not our concern. If, if there are five dog parks that already exist in Northampton, and this is the sixth, but it's allowed, then that's not our concern. So, if it, if it's not a good business plan, it will fail. If it's a good business plan, it, it will survive, and if it affects Glendale Road and makes the city do something on Glendale Road, that'll happen. But none of that is within our purview. So, we're looking at something that was a non-conforming industrial use. It's being proposed for something that is allowed, and they've, they've met most of, if not all, the requirements. I've got a couple of questions, but I, I, I think everything has been met. So, the fact that this business doesn't exist in Northampton, a, a, again, it's allowed. It's allowed here, and that's all that we can go by. So, I have very few questions that are specifically related to what is allowed and not allowed.
What about hours? Is there any, there's nothing that, I mean, we can deal with lighting, but the, but hours of operation aren't part of this, of anything that we could do, given that this is a residential area?
Well, the application proposes a dawn to dusk, so that, and that in itself will al, also have sort of a cascading effect on when the lights are on in the parking lot. You wouldn't want lights on.
But I was thinking of noise, actually. Dawn is pretty early in the summertime.
But it's similar type to, to other, like boarding businesses, kennels that we've approved, have similar hours, I would imagine.
Yeah, but indoors or out?
But you also might wanna, it might be helpful to have the whole map pulled up, but the separation from where the residences are.
Yeah, this is, these are some of the questions, though, that I.
To, to the area where that would occur. So, I don't, I think that, you know, as a park, that's typically when parks are open, are dawn to dusk, except for something, you know, that maybe something like Look Park or whatever, they might have extended hours. But many of the parks around the city are open dawn to dusk and that kind of thing. So not, you know.
And would the dawn to dusk include special events?
Well, I think that's another issue that you could certainly stipulate, because events may attract more than just the people who are there to use it. So, you know, I think it's definitely in your purview to specify, you know, either how many events, or maybe no events at this point, and if, it doesn't sound like that's on the, the first few of the proposed use. So certainly, any applicant for any project anywhere can always come back and have a permit amended. So your first cut could say, you know what, see how this goes, no events, membership, commercial outdoor recreation is fine. And then if events are desired by the applicant in the future, they can always come back and ask for the permit to be amended.
Other questions?
Well, I mean, I think we do have to figure out the open space, you know, whether or not the open space, you know, because, yeah, because that, that dog leg area was not included, and, right? So, I don't know if that's something that, that ends up becoming a condition, that, you know, is information that can be provided later, if it's something that needs to happen earlier on. But, yeah, that's, that's a big, that's a big deal.
Right. I mean, you could do that in, you could certainly do that in the condition that, before any work begins, well, I, I recommend it in the conditions anyway, that the conservation easement be, or conservation restriction, or whether, whatever mechanism that the applicant chooses to protect that land be done prior to construction. And at that point, they're gonna have to show exactly where that land area is, and make sure that it meets the zoning requirements. So, I think that can be a part of that. And if it does include some of the, either the trails area, where the dog walking's happening, or that extra dog leg, then that could be included as well, at that time. But that doesn't, you know, that probably wouldn't change the sort of working area, the functioning parking lot and building area.
Go ahead.
Carolyn, has the applicant seen the comments from staff and DPW? A number of them were addressed in the presentation.
Yes, I, they received the DPW comments today, about, there were several of them about the tree, not only the tree protection for the trees that are remaining, but also the replanting for the trees, so that was sent to them. And I did send my comments about, as you said, they were, for the most part, addressed about the open space and the lighting.
The two light poles.
If I could ask the applicant, just on the tree clearing, you said you've got tree clearing on both parts. Been on the planning board for a little while. I'm, I'm not sure I've ever seen this much. These numbers are pretty large, for our typical tree clearing.
There's a lot of trees on that.
Yeah, so we.
You could just kinda walk through, kind of, the before and after, as, you know, as your plan.
Sure. So, the dog park area, the functions with the small dog area, large dog area, is clear. In terms of tree clearing, it's really easy to develop in terms of mitigation for trees. The area up front on Glendale Road, the area for the cluster development, is heavily treeed with pine trees, mostly pine, very few oak. And our survey crew went out and, according with the regulations, went and measured trees that were greater than twenty inches diameter, and that, that's the trees that are shown on our, our plans. Then in placing, so this, this plan shows the area of the cluster development, and the areas that we anticipate. Again, whoever develops this land may have a different configuration of the building placement and clearing, so they would have to come before you and, and make sure that they are meeting the requirements. But this is associated with the, with the grading and the layout, as we currently show it, the numbers of trees that we anticipate removing.
If I'm understanding correctly, from the permit, that really almost all the tree clearing is occurring in the front part of the property?
The majority, yes. Yep.
And are you gonna clear those trees before you sell the property? Or are you anticipating what will happen when the property's sold?
This is a anticipation of what would happen, to illustrate the amount of tree clearing that would need to happen. We would not clear the trees if we didn't have to.
So that says that if the property was sold, anyone who wants to develop it has to come back, in essence, with a tree plan?
Yes. Now, the number of trees, sort of, the, I guess, the worst-case scenario for the tree removal has been identified on the plan. So, I wouldn't say, you know, if, my suggested condition would be to make sure it's on the permit, so anyone buying that property would be held to those permit conditions that's, would state that they have to show and flag the trees that are coming down, and then do the replacement in accordance with the zoning, for those trees that are coming down over twenty inches. So I would definitely recommend a condition to that extent, particularly since the applicant is not intending to do that work or sell.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I had one other comment, just to sort of, again, sort of the traffic issue and the concern about maybe the trips that would be coming for the park, and how can you compare this to other parks? You know, we know that there are people who walk their dogs throughout the city of Northampton at different places, the state hospital, conservation areas, and we know people come from other communities. So they're on our street network already, coming from wherever they're coming from to go to those places. I don't know what percentage that is, but I would, I would assume that with, that some of those folks that are currently visiting Northampton Parks in and around would also be interested in being, I mean, you heard that in the public comment. So, there is that piece too. It might just be sort of a shifting of where those people are currently going to.
Public comment's still open?
Yes, it is.
I'm just, I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention. So now, I guess we should leave that open till we're.
You might wanna go through sort of a.
The staff recommendations. I was gonna say, have we dealt with this list of seven staff recommendations?
So.
Carolyn, are you comfortable with all of those?
Yeah, so actually, why don't I run through, because I've also included some from Department of Public Works. When, they sent their comments this afternoon, so I sort of wrapped in, I just wanted to go over those. Some of them are details, but they're about sort of making sure that new plans are submitted prior to construction, so that they can evaluate. They've asked for more details on some of the detail sheets. So.
Would that include the stormwater and the Conservation Commission conditions as well?
No. So, stormwater is a separate permit, so those, they, they are bound by those permit, those permit conditions. Conservation Commission.
Same.
Right, same thing. These are just engineering comments that come to you all in your deliberations. So, DPW asks that revised construction plans, signed by engineer, be submitted to DPW for final review, at least thirty days ahead of construction. And that details include specification of where tracking pads are for construction, and trees that are to be protected are called out on the plans. And clarification of any new lot line boundaries that will be established through the A and R process, be identified on the plans, as well as tree protection details that are in accordance with the standard requirements. And details about planting, and how to plant the trees, be included, to ensure that the wire basket and burlap are taken completely off of the root ball. And that they wanna see the final grading for the cluster units. That was actually, it's shown on the plan there, but I don't, I guess they didn't see it. And then the other ones that I had submitted to you in the staff memo relate to conditions issue, prior to issuance of a building permit or site work relating to, you know, recording an easement in accordance with the zoning relative to the open space requirements, and seeing those final numbers. Recording of an easement for the trail to the city. And a revised lighting plan, which I think has been submitted, or that could still be the condition, even though they're, they're meeting it. I had recommended that the BUG rating, or bug rating, be modified, so you all can discuss, you all can discuss whether you're satisfied with that, based on the reduction of the lights. So, that's one issue that you probably wanna clean up. And then, prior to issuance of the building permit for any of the houses on the house lots, that the tree protection measures for any of the trees to be saved must be installed and inspected. And all trees over twenty-inch DBH that will be removed must be identified, and replacement must be done in accordance with Chapter twelve point three. And then prior to a certificate of occupancy for the homes, all tree replacement must be installed, so that's just sort of the check for that. And there are, prior to certificate of occupancy for the dog park, to ensure that the tree planting that's been proposed meets those tree replacement requirements. And then numbers, one of the conditions, I think they've already met on the plans, I think can be deleted, is, is about reducing the total number of light poles. And they've offered to turn those lights off a half hour after the close of the office. And that's it, I believe.
Question on the light poles, does anybody have an issue with the, the staff recommendations was to reduce to two? light poles on the site, one at the entry and one in the parking, though, yeah, now it's.
Three.
Down, yeah, one and three, down from four and nine. So it's a substantial reduction, and I get the bug rating, if you have zero, that means you need more lights to get, so. And I think they're far enough removed from the road that I don't, and they're, they're turned off a half hour early. So I don't, I don't have an issue with that quantity myself. I don't know if anybody else feels the same.
So do we need to alter that condition or just remove that?
That's what's being proposed now, and so I'm okay with what's being proposed, so that, that wouldn't be a condition, right. So as I see it going by staff comments, the conditions would be one, two, three, four, five, basically.
Right. And then do we want to add the provision for no events? No public events, I don't remember really how you would word.
Do we limit?
Limit events to standard operating hours?
Or, you know, allow two events, just to see what an event, you know, maybe an event isn't bad or maybe an event clearly demonstrates that this is a bad idea, you know, and so.
Carolyn, is there a way to, because there, I mean, obviously there's not a lot on the site. I mean, is, how, is there a way for us to create that condition to say, you know, there can't be any events that go beyond the boundaries of the property? I mean, it's one thing if you've got people parked along the lane or whatever, but if people then spill out. I mean, I, I think that's the, you know, can we create, can, can we create that condition that if there is an event, it can't go beyond, you know?
Well, I think, I think, I think it's a little difficult to sort of understand what an event would be without having it as part of the plan and without even any description of what that may be, so I.
I would rather wait and let her get this process together and see what kind of numbers they're dealing with and the rest of it, and then propose a plan for an event.
The only counter is too strong a word, but the only thing that, that caused the mind, actually, Mark mentioning the OXBO and the soccer that we've discussed many times reminds me of was the fallout, whatever you want to call it, of the ultimate frisbee.
Yes, that's right.
Where, you know, it seemed like all, everything involved with this was good, except it was wildly successful and then just exacerbated the issue for the folks on Island Drive. So that, that's my, I'm just, you know, it just, it.
So what are you saying?
Well, I'm just trying to, you know.
You're saying no events or are you saying, what are you saying? I don't know what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, I think we need to consider, you know, a successful quote unquote event could have conditions or could, you know, place an even additional burden on the neighborhood because it's more successful than anybody thought it was going to be.
Well, I agree with.
That's what happened with the ultimate thing out, you know, the first year or so out of.
The difference, and I agree with everything you're saying, the difference with soccer, the soccer jamborees or the ultimate frisbee tournaments was traffic on Island Row was horrible, but then at the end of Island Road was parking.
Right.
Here, if an event is successful and there's only 24 spots, where does everybody go? And if they're doubled up on Glendale Road, then that just makes everything worse.
They've got the overflow on the site, the lawn overflow parking, but it's still.
Not having an event until she's got herself, until she understands what it is she's doing.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Events aren't part of my business plan. I literally have no events planned, right? I need to open it and understand how I'm operating before I would ever have an event here. So the idea of having no events until I propose one is perfectly fine with me. The only events I was thinking would be with bacon or things along those nature, you know, and I need to be operating at least in here or two. So you can make that part of your thing. It's perfectly fine. You don't have to talk about it anymore.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the cluster development, maybe? So, you know, we're looking at a site layout for the cluster development on lots that are not going to be cleared or anything. So if somebody, once those are sold, would somebody come back to us with new planting plans and site plans? Or is this, once this, you know, if we were to approve this with various conditions, is this what the only thing that would be permitted to be constructed, is this particular site layout?
So that's a valid question. I think the, you were, you're approving the site layout as shown. So the number of trees that are anticipated that would come down to allow this layout to happen. However, if someone came in and said, you know, I want to nestle, nestle a smaller house into this other location, maybe further back, and then not cut so many trees, I wouldn't consider that a reason to come back to the board if they were doing less than what you're approving on this plan. If, and, and I think the location of the houses are probably conceptual except that it's meeting a setback on the one side. So if the house went closer towards the driveway, I would say that doesn't trigger a reason to come back.
And it's the one drive is, is in there.
Right, right. So there are probably a number of changes that could happen that wouldn't necessarily require them coming back. If more trees were to be cut or shifting sort of closer to the property lines happen, that would have to come back, I would say.
And, and there is no way that, that another developer could try to fit a fourth house?
No, you're approving three.
Three.
Yeah, so they could go with two, they could go with one, they couldn't go with four, unless they came back to the board. The other thing is we don't allow more than three structures on a common driveway. So you wouldn't be able to do four anyway, even if they came back to the board.
Other questions, comments from the board, clarification?
Just, just to get it out there, I think just for clarification, so people understand what we've heard and what we can or cannot do about it, I just want to take a quick lap through what, some of the comments and, and so people understand what, what is in our purview. So I'll just do this quickly, so, and I apologize if I got some of the names wrong, but Alan had questions on, on the housing, parking, bike path connection, and concerns about traffic. Again, parking, the bike path is the city, traffic is, is not our purview. Marcia, traffic, water pressure issues, which we've heard before, Glendale Road is bad, again, not our issue. Ernest, why the cluster of houses? It's allowed and they meet the requirements right now. Mary Ann, lack of communication, business issues regarding membership limits, safety concerns on the road. All good points, but not specific to what we can, can, and cannot rule on. Marlene, business plan concerns, lack of communication, trip data is not applicable, big events are a concern. That's the one thing that is, is under our purview, and the applicant's already said she's okay with no events. Concern about noise and property, Kathleen, Bonnie, similar concerns as others, what happens to the wildlife? We heard there's a wildlife corridor to let existing wildlife from one side to the other. And that's it, so, so, so the, the concerns are valid, but they're not concerns that we can rule on. And the only one that came up in all of those comments was, was the big events, which the applicant doesn't have an issue with. So while I appreciate everyone's, you know, coming out and their, and their concerns about the road specifically and what should or should not be done, or should or should not be allowed along Glendale Road, what's in front of us is allowed, and the applicant has met the requirements. And so based on what we can and cannot do, I'm, I'm in favor of the project.
I think, I think you raised a couple of good points, just for the board, just to clarify the couple of things that I think you all probably could discuss, just to clarify a bit more about the membership limit. So, membership limits are, that would be an unenforceable mechanism for the board to address. However, I think you could also look at it as potentially being sort of a built-in self-limiting thing related to the parking. Because if someone is bringing their dog and they don't have a place to park, you've heard that Glendale Road is not safe. I don't think someone wants to take their animal off, out of their vehicle on Glendale Road to walk in because there's no parking. So I think that kind of, they're tied together, so people will maybe no longer be members if they can't consistently find parking there. So I think it sort of addresses, I think it's a valid point that you raised and, and potentially, because of the location and because of the fact that it's set so far back off Glendale Road, it's going to pull people in to park. And so I think that sort of the design and the site essentially addresses that, is what I would suggest to the board.
And the design allows for growth, so if parking becomes an issue and people start parking on Glendale Road or membership drops because there's no parking, the layout allows for future parking two to three times what is already proposed.
Is that permitted or does that have to come back? Well, if a new parking area, that would have to come back for expansion of parking, yeah.
Has the applicant seen this list?
Of proposed conditions? No, I identified them as issues, but not specific conditions, yeah.
Okay. I need to close public comment.
Second.
Second by Anne, all in favor?
I just realized there was another comment from DPW that it's minor. I just want you to know that DPW is recommending a change in the castrum tree to be planted. So that went to the applicant. I don't know if you want to put that in as a condition, the applicant has seen that. So it's just a recommendation because they haven't been surviving very well.
They're not going to want to put in trees that haven't been surviving very well.
So, wait, that was a DPW recommendation that wasn't a condition? It was just a recommendation?
Well, they're recommending that a different tree be selected. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know, I mean, that comment went to the applicant so they can understand that the tree warden has seen that they're not really surviving very well here, so.
So what's going to happen now is we're going to have our conversation, the public comment period has been closed. I would just like to thank everyone for their patience and understanding. One of the better, more emotional hearings that we've had before this board, and I appreciate everyone's patience and how long this has been and your thoughtful comments and the time clearly that went into you coming here tonight. So I appreciate that, and now we're going to have any conversation we're going to have before we take our vote. But I just didn't want people to leave without being thanked for the patience and respect that you showed each other. Thank you.
So again, relative to the tree, it's a recommendation by DPW. If, if the applicant chooses to plant what was being proposed and dies within a year.
They have to replace it.
Alright, so regardless, okay.
So that was just a recommendation for the type of tree?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question? I mean, like of you, maybe? Have we in the past required applicants to do new traffic studies?
Trying to accomplish?
Hearing, hearing isn't over, so this is the public part, but we still have business to conduct, so.
Sorry.
Sorry, ahead.
So have we in the past required applicants to undertake new traffic counts, new?
Yes, if there's a, if there's a, so this is a major project.
Right.
We do require a traffic study. They provide the traffic study.
Right.
That doesn't mean going out and doing a full-scale count.
Right, right.
And then a count isn't a study either.
Yes, right.
So it's just a count.
Yes.
So, yeah, so it depends on the, on the, I mean, you know, you voiced it already, people, that's the number one issue, people come to, our street is the worst street in the city.
Right.
Every street is the worst street in the city.
No, it is, and it's from their point of view, it absolutely, I understand that, yeah.
It's the one they know.
Yeah.
Is there anything we haven't hit on yet?
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Have to put the pieces together.
I, I move that, Mark. Right.
Yeah, he were.
I mean, as far as I have it, it's these, the ones that are stated with conditions in the.
One through five.
Right.
One through five, the DPW recommendation, uh, condition. I think there were like about six of those, seven of those. And then, but I thought.
Might as well put the events one in.
No events.
Yeah, no events.
Yeah.
And then I thought we needed to be a little bit more specific about the conservation, the open space application.
That's one of the, that's one of the, yeah, that they just need to verify. It seems like they're in compliance, but the, but there's no schedule, so we need the schedule. We need the numbers to back up what seems to be the case.
So I had suggested in my staff memo, the applicant must record either conservation restriction for the land shown on the plan or dedicate the land in compliance with the open space requirements.
Two B.
Two B, okay, I'll make sure that went, okay, alright.
And then does the easement also get recorded?
Yes, trail easement has, should be recorded prior to a building permit.
Would someone like to make a?
Alright, I'll give this a shot. I move to approve major site plan, air driveway for special permit, open space, residential cluster, special permit, commercial, outdoor recreation, dog park from share shots, zero Glendale Road, Florence map ID forty-nine dash four with the following seven conditions. Number one, prior to site work, draft easement from the owner for the proposed trail along the approved site shall be recorded. Tree protection shall be installed and inspected by the city. Number two, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant must record the easement for the trail. The applicant must record either a conservation restriction for the land shown on the plan or dedicate the land in compliance with the open space requirements in ten point five. This must be a conveyed conveyance of either the restricted.
Surveyed, surveyed.
Survey, sorry, this must be a survey conveyance of either the restricted area or the area to be dedicated to the city. A revised lighting plan showing specs for outdoor lighting fixtures that do not exceed 3,000 K, we didn't really touch on that. Or that the bug rating is not applicable anymore because they're down to one, they're not down to zero. So I don't know that C is applicable anymore.
Well, do you want, well, you can keep the 3,000 K.
3,000, sorry, I'll just leave it at that, 3,000 K temperature. Number three, prior to issuance of a building permit for any of the three house lots, tree protection measures for any of the trees to be saved on site must be installed in accordance with ANSI 300 standards and inspected by the city. All trees over 20 inch DBH that will be removed must be identified in the building plans and tree replacement in accordance with chapter 230, 12 dash point three must be met for these trees. Number four, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for any of the homes, all tree replacement required for the trees removed under 12.3 must be installed. Number five, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the dog park site, eight inches worth of additional trees shall be planted on the dog, dog park site or alternative replacement in accordance with 12.3 shall be completed. Number six, there shall be no events held, nor formal events, held on the premises. And number seven, DPW conditions as stated also shall be met.
And what about the lights turned off a half hour after it's closed?
Well, that's what was proposed.
Yeah, so that was in the proposal, yeah.
That's all I got.
Second in by Dan. All in favor? opposed? Carolyn, you have some minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. And I have one other thing.
Oh, yeah, two other things.
Oh, I don't have any A and Rs.
You said you have any?
Yay!
You always should have them, you don't have them, you don't have them, like always.
Now, I think, now I think I'm just going to put it on there. That's right.
In your protection.
Right, so.
Modification to 55 Maple Street to complete detached structure.
Right, so this just came in a few, they should have brought the plan. This came in a few meetings ago, the detached accessory dwelling on Maple Street, so there's an existing two-family.
Oh, yes.
Oh, excuse me, yes, you want to? So 55 Maple Street, there was a detached accessory dwelling in the back. It was bigger than actually an accessory dwelling.
Oh, right, yeah.
And in Florence Center.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
This is, this building stands up so tall.
I know, well, this is a, yeah.
Isn't that one?
No, this isn't the condo.
This is the one in Florence Center, south of Main Street, on the corner of Middle and Maple.
John.
Folks, folks, we, we haven't finished our business, thank you. You don't have to stay, but you can take it outside, as they say, so.
So originally, it had to come for site plan because it was another principal structure on the parcel. They are, they have reconfigured things and they want to connect it to the main house.
This is over close to where I live.
No.
Oh, okay, that's another one that's come...
That's interesting. I could show you on the...
That's all right.
I think I remember this one, yeah, yeah.
So really, it's just a quick admin change, they, this was gonna be a detached carport with this ADA accessible, universal house.
Right, 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 that's right, the 900 square foot.
They now have decided they'd like to extend the carport connected to the house and make a mudroom for themselves and do it all at once. So, you know, just to cover all the bases, I wanted to bring that back with you, because there's a minor change to the site plan, but I don't think it's enough to bring it back in and just so you know.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Dan, all in favor?
I motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.